I'm now going to call to order the Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, 6:00 PM, School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please be seated. Okay, roll call.
Colleen Conklin, present.
Sharon Masaro.
Kristi Chong, present.
Will Ferry, present.
LaShaka Moore.
Sally Hunt.
Okay, so we are going to move to 2.02 Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Week Proclamation, presented by Commissioner Andy Dance. Welcome, Commissioner Dance.
Welcome home.
Thank you. Great to be here. Thank you. There's a few others with me. Chief Williams, come up. You guys can come on up, too. This is, this is why you're here, right? Come on up. So again, thank you. I'm Andy Dance, Flagler County Commission Chair, but also Chairman of the Community Traffic Safety Team, which is why we're here. With me is Chief Williams from the Flagler County Sheriff's Office, Pam Blanketship from the Volusia Flagler TPO, and a couple of our crossing guards. Could you introduce yourselves to the mic?
Yes, Alfred Franzini.
Thomas Messini.
So this is the time of the year where we're getting close to back to school, where we talk about student pedestrian and cyclist safety. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to remember Ms. Winnie Odin, who would be here supporting us in the seats, because this was her passion, and we lost her this past year. But, and I wouldn't be here without Ms. Odin's support and urging to take on this leadership position. So we'll, we'll read in our pedestrian cyclist safety proclamation. This is a resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing August 12th through 16th, 2024, as Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Week. Whereas walking and bicycling to school are viable and environmentally sound forms of transportation, an excellent form of exercise, and provide quality recreation. And whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to bicycle or walk to school offers an opportunity to build activity into a daily routine. Whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution. And whereas hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian and bicycle safety a priority. And whereas, an important role for parents and legal guardians is to teach children about pedestrian and bicycle safety and become aware of the challenges and dangers that they face on their trip to and from school each day. Whereas Flagler Schools believes that raising awareness of bicyclists and pedestrian safety is vital to ensuring the health and well-being of all students and citizens in Flagler County. And whereas, in an effort to promote public awareness of this important issue, Flagler Schools strongly urges all motorists to be on alert for bicyclists and pedestrians on our roadways, especially when making turns, for all bicyclists and pedestrians to ride or walk safely, courteously, and according to the law, and to do what they can to make themselves more visible to motorists, including wearing bright reflective clothing and using appropriate lights on bicycles when dark. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that the first full week of school, August 12th through 16th, 2024, shall be Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Week in Flagler County, and urges all residents to recognize this important initiative by becoming more aware of cyclists and walkers, and take appropriate precautions to ensure the safety of all students using our roadways. Be it further resolved that Flagler Schools encourages all students to become familiar with the benefits offered by the pedestrian and cyclist education programs in our community, and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual knowledge and safety, thereby preventing pedestrian and cyclist injuries and deaths. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, excuse me, at the regular open public meeting held on this day, July 2024, signed by Will Ferry, Chair, and LaShaka Moore, Superintendent. So, thank you. Did anybody, do you need to speak to any of your initiatives coming up, or Pam?
Okay. I'd like to say that one of the things that the River to Sea TPO, or to be the Volusia Flagler TPO, will be working on is bringing the Operation Best Foot Forward program into Flagler County. This is a program that increases driver awareness of yield laws and decreases pedestrian fatalities through that process. It's currently in Volusia County and a number of other Flagler, or another of, another few Flag, other counties, not Flagler County. It's coming to Flagler County. And that will be coming up shortly, so you'll hear more about that.
Excellent. Excellent.
Pam and I will be at the Back to School Jam with some information for parents.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you to our crossing guard who come out every year. Many of them return each year, and we really appreciate them. We could not have the safety that we do for our children who walk to school and cycle to school without them, because without them, deputy sheriffs would have to do it. And you know, we don't have enough to cover that and cover the roads. So, we just want to thank them for all they do in keeping our children safe. Thank you.
And I had invited Tyson Landon, our eighth grader, who is the CMPS First Place International Champion, who did a Riva Live program on cyclists and pedestrian safety, but he couldn't make it tonight. And really, with that, I just want to thank you for this opportunity again. There is, our FDOT liaison, Joe Stewart, sent me some information, which I forwarded to Tom Woolahan, about safe routes to school. There's some trainings coming up that this district can take advantage of. So, keep in, hopefully he'll share that and can take advantage of those trainings. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Well, okay, just a, just a comment. First of all, for our thanking, for our crossing guards, we probably don't thank you nearly as much as we should. So, thank you very much. It's great that you're here tonight. And Andy, I just want to, this has been a passion of yours for many, many years. And it's neat to watch, from the very first time you brought this issue forward, with bus stops and bicycling safety to school and, and all the rest of it, and to see how far it has gone and the impact that you've made. So, I want to just congratulate you and give you some kudos, and thank you for your efforts around this initiative, because you haven't let it go. And it's good to see that you now, as a county commissioner, have brought that initiative forward. So, just wanted to take a moment to recognize you and your efforts. So, thank you. That's okay.
Ellen Lemay. I'm Ellen Lemay. I'm a crossing guard at the Indian Trail School. This is my sixth year.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemay. So, if we could gather up front for a picture?
Yep.
Thank you, guys. Here we go. Smile, big smile. Very much. Congratulations.
Yes, a great reminder for Flagler County, observe school zones, slow down, and be aware. So, we will now move on to 3.01 Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight.
Yes, so, this week, the Florida State Board of Education is meeting. They will be updating the metrics related to school and district grades. And so, we eagerly await what the outcome will be for, for Flagler Schools. But I want to just take a moment and just highlight our faculty and staff for all of their hard work this past school year, and thank our families as well for all of their support. We're super excited to get this year started off, going into this year, as we continue to move Flagler forward.
Thank you. And now we will move on to 3.02 Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight. And we have Ms. Mariotti this evening. Welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening. To Superintendent LaShaka Moore, Chairman Ferry, and our distinguished Flagler School Board members, on behalf of the Flagler County Education Foundation Board of Directors, and our Executive Director, Teresa Rizzo, in her absence, my name is Mariotti Johnson, and I serve as the Assistant Director of Finance and Operations for the Foundation. As a direct support organization for Flagler Schools, we would like to spotlight a few of several of our summer programs supported through Flagler County Education Foundation and our generous community. First, a huge thank you to a single donor, a single anonymous donor, for believing in the success of our Great Minds Summer Program at the George Washington Carver Community Center. Without her, we would not have been able to make this happen. Thank you so much. She knows who she is. This success is also shared with the Flagler County Cultural Council's Turtle Trail, which shared a love of the art and science of our own Flagler County treasures with our students throughout the program. A special thank you to everyone, but particularly our teachers, Mr. Manley, Ms. Vasquez, and Ms. Jones, for sharing their love and passion with our students throughout this program. I am lovelily known as Ms. Sunshine, because of the love that those students have for not only that community, but for what they got through the foundation this summer. Thank you to Mr. Smith, Ms. Lloyd Miller, and Ms. Robinson, for working with our students daily and making this program a huge success, preventing the summer slide for our pre-K to fifth graders in the Bonnell community. Secondly, our staff and board were thrilled to support all of our Flagler Schools' summer programs throughout the county, from STEM to literacy, credit recovery, and civics, and all of our programming in between. We thank you all, all of our Flagler Schools' faculty and staff, for exhibiting excellence in education through this summer. Thank you for sharing your time, your talent, and your treasure with our students and families. We appreciate you, each of you individually so much. Lastly, to our vibrant community of donors and volunteers for your support and generosity and loving on our Flagler Schools' faculty and staff, we appreciate you, FB Real Estate, Raymond James, Swiller Bees, gotta love the donuts, Blue Ocean Title, Pet Friendly and Homes, and Heroes, and so many more. Thank you for making it happen for Flagler Schools. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have a 3.04, we have a community spotlight. I'd like to invite Greg Blasey with Palm Coast Flagler Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Greg Blasey, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here on behalf of the Chamber and Flagler County businesses to present the first-ever Excellence in Action Award to Superintendent LaShaka Moore. The superintendent, her staff, and in partnership with the Flagler County Education Foundation, we have seen a dramatic improvement in the engagement with businesses in our school system, and so we're very excited about that. The award is called the Excellence in Action Award, and I just want to talk about some of the actions really quick. I'll, I'll bring it to you in a minute. But, the, the Chamber was able to gather a group of more than 25 business leaders to tour Matanzas, Indian Trails Middle School, and Beltar Elementary. The superintendent joined us on that. Our leadership program, Lead Flagler, toured FPC Bonnell and BTMS. The junior chamber hosted a career exploration fair and a child health fair at BTMS. And the list goes on and on. And then, when, as we look to the future, we're really excited about the superintendent's diploma plus vision. So, on behalf of the Chamber Superintendent Moore, we really appreciate your support and effort on behalf of students and families, including my own kids here in Flagler County Schools. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and we wanted to present this award to you. So, Mr. Chair, if I may approach.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Superintendent Moore. Well deserved. And so, we will then move on to approval of minutes. So, I need a motion to approve 4.01 through 4.03, three.
Show moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Massaro, and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, any adoptions or changes to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Okay. All right, so then we will now move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment this evening? Okay. Would anybody like to come forward to make public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we will move on to finance consent. I need a, just a reminder to the public that we have workshopped all these items. And if you'd like to see that discussion, all of our meetings are online. You can watch that and see our discussion on all these consent items. So, I'll need a motion to approve finance consent, 7.01 through 7.08.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion to approve through, from Ms. Dr. Conklin, and a second from Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Post's motion, pass. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, so we're going to move on to academic service consent. I need a motion to approve 9.01 through 9.11.
Show moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we will move to 10 Operational Service Consent. A motion to approve 10.01 through 10.02.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Chong and a second from Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Human 11.01 through 11.03. Need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong, a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to our first action item of the evening, which is Academic Services Code of Student Conduct Timeline. If there aren't any, if there isn't any further need for a discussion from the, or information from staff, I'd like a motion to approve Academic Action Item 16.01.
Show moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Massaro.
Second.
A second by Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to 17 Operational Services, 17.01. This is the SRD Contract. Do I have a motion to approve this contract?
Show moved. Second.
Second. Any discussion regarding this?
Yes, one question. Tommy, you sent out a graph today.
Yes.
Yes, that we, I don't know if the rest of you got the chance to see that, but, and it had on, on it the difference of amount of pay between us and St. John's County, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Chief Srobridge did send in a cost breakdown of the average cost per, per deputy in Flagler County. And it did, it was the same breakdown that he presented to the County Commission in that it did show the average cost of the county north of St. John's in that breakdown.
And there was a substantial cost differential, was there?
Yes.
Like, close to $50,000?
Yes.
Less. We pay?
Yes.
Yes. So I just want to make sure the general public heard that.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other discussion?
If I can just add, if we can also get that loaded to Board Doc so that the public can see the chart that is, that is being referenced, please.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to Human Resource Services, 18.01, Marathon Health Contract. I have a motion to approve.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Massaro. Any discussion in this matter? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We have School Board Attorney Action, 20.01, Selection of FSBA Representative and Alternative for FSBA Advocacy. Okay, so Dr. Conklin, you, you served on this. And, you know, they're, right now, we'll ask who would be interested in filling that role. But beforehand, could you describe your interaction with that and the involvement that is required for that position?
Sure. So I've done this for the last 24 years. So it's, it is a wonderful opportunity to engage with the state organization, for one. The time involved, it definitely is a time commitment because it requires interaction with Florida School Board Association. It requires possibly, you know, going to Tallahassee and meeting with legislators or meeting with, you know, leadership at FSBA. And then depending on what kind of role you want to play with FSBA, it can lead to an opportunity for, you know, a leadership role within the organization and the Board of Directors there. But it's a wonderful opportunity. I highly recommend it. It has been nothing but a positive experience for the last 24 years, truly. And so I know, you know, technically right now,
Just the two of you.
We're looking at the two of you.
The two have to decide.
So, you know, it, it, really, it's who wants to do it, who has the time commitment to do it. And then one of you, I would recommend, obviously, be the alternative, alternate for it.
Do they have to report back to the board, too?
Yeah, and, and it's always helpful during session if there's a hot topic item, if something's going up. You just kind of bring those issues to the forefront at the meetings with the legislative update.
Is that when most of the interaction is, is when they're in session? Is that when you found, or is it throughout the year?
It's throughout. It's throughout.
Um, I, I know Will is already, he's taken on the chair role, so I know that that's a lot. So I, I don't mind taking that on and learning about it. And I do enjoy going to Tallahassee and learning about legislation.
It's a great experience. It really, truly is. Highly recommend it. Highly recommend getting engaged with Florida School Board Association. And as you become part of the advocacy committee and the group, you'll see a lot more of the benefit to being involved in it. So, you know, it's really up to you all.
How often does advocacy committee meet?
Well, during session, we meet a lot. You know, a lot of it is on Zoom. You know, a lot of it is virtual. But we would meet almost every week. So it depends, it's a, you know, it's a, it's an update call. It's a check-in call. That's during session. And then leading up to session, there's an advocacy committee where you're kind of going over the platform and really kind of shepherding what the FSBA platform's going to end up looking like.
Okay.
It's a great experience.
Well, then if you're willing, Ms. Chong, then we'll make you the representative and I'll take the alternate position. Let's go ahead and just.
So that's, so we need a motion?
Yeah, let's take a motion for that.
I was going to say, I'll make a motion for Kristi Chong to be the FSBA Legislative Liaison and Advocacy Delicate and for Will Furry to be the alternate.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. So now that leads us to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? No. And seeing no one approaching, we will, oh, we do have, this is for any, any topic. Now, agenda or off-agenda? Agenda items or? Okay, would you like to speak now? Okay, please come forward.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Ramirez, mother of four, four boys here in Flagler County. I am following up. There was a workshop a few weeks ago. I don't know the exact date, just a few weeks ago, but I just wanted to follow up because I've been researching since the workshop, just to make sure I had the right information. But the team that assists with, you know, literacy and students getting interventions and MTSS, and it was mentioned, a question from a board member, if they're receiving the, or in Gilliam Training or some type of, you know, OG. And I heard yes. But as a mother with a student, you know, a child with an IDP, I went through all my notes because I remember not seeing that or receiving that. So I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything. And so I reviewed the notes and like talked to different teachers. And I'm just kind of curious. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. I did speak to other people at different schools and I don't, I think there's like a disconnect. So I just want to make sure as a parent, I'm not missing anything. And then if that could be maybe brought back up or if it's not being done, maybe it's being done at some campuses and not at others. And if it, you know, if it can be done, that would be really great because Broward County has actually trained all their instructors this summer. So I would like to see, maybe we can open up to see how we could do that here for dyslexic children. So for those that don't know what that training is. So as a mother, I just wanted to follow up. I reviewed my notes. I did not see that we were getting it. And I thought maybe you guys were introducing it. And then I realized it was stated, maybe they were getting it. So I just wanted to see if we could follow up on that and if there's anything I can do. But I really would like to just make sure the right information. So, because as a parent, I just want to make sure I'm hearing the right things. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody like to make public comment before I close it out? Seeing no one approaching, I'll close public comment. And we will move on to board member requests. Seeing no requests, we'll move on to upcoming board discussion topics. There are several that are posted here in Board Docs that will be upcoming that have been requested by other board members. Any questions or discussion regarding those items? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to closing comments.
I would just, I really don't have very much to say. I know that everybody has been working hard and everybody thinks that we're off for the summers. Well, let me rephrase, that our teachers and our administrators and that this is the slow time of year. I just want to thank everyone who has done summer programming, administrators and teachers, and our students and our families, because it is a lot and it is a major effort. And there's no break in between. And so I just want to acknowledge those folks that have been working all of our summer programs and let them know, very grateful for their efforts and for our students for attending those programs. That's really it.
Couple things. First of all, there'll be three big events happening before we return to our next evening meeting. The first one is Friday night at 7:30 when our Olympics begin. For any of you that have had the opportunity to be involved, I was fortunate to be involved in 1984 Olympics. There's nothing like it. There's nothing like it when you get to see. And I was not a competitor, but I was involved with the United States Field Hockey Team. And we won a bronze. And then we went on a seven, seven-city tour afterwards that was incredible throughout the country. So support our athletes. Opening ceremonies in Paris, 7:30, Friday night. Second thing's going to happen is school starts. School's going to start August 12th. So the class of 2025 will begin finishing their high school career. Also, the class of 2036 will start first grade.
Oh, my God.
2036. So yeah, that, there's one of them. So just keep that in mind. But the big day is August 12th. The teachers will start the week before that. And the third thing is you'll be voting for new school board seats, mine as well as Dr. Conklin's. And that's, that's already started with mail-in votes. Mail-in votes have already started. As well as early voting starts August 10th, and the actual primary is August 20th. And there will be an election of school board seats that day because you need 51% of the vote. So I would assume, I'm hoping, that enough people turn out. And the way the things are looking, it should work, that they won't, one of them will be able to get the 51%. And it's nice to know that I seem to have a pretty good understanding of most of the candidates, but a lot of people don't. So starting, I believe, on Monday, and I have a flyer up here, there's going to be a meet and greet for school board members, just school board members, the four competitive people that are running for school board. And it's nonpartisan. It's going to be at the Carver Center starting at 6:00 PM. And it's going to be a, it's actually going to be a forum where they're going to answer questions, and they're all going to answer the exact same questions. And then there will be time afterwards for people to ask individual questions if they want to meet the school board members. But all four members have committed to be there. And it's being sponsored by Focus on Flagler Youth Coalition, which is a good sponsor. Can, that's the future of our county, is our youth. So that's there. I believe on Tuesday night, the African-American NAACP, the African-American Center, is also having an event. And I believe on Wednesday night, there's going to be an online event hosted by the Facebook Parents Group. So our candidates have a very busy timeframe ahead of them. It's so important that you get to know your candidates. We had issues, obviously, resulting from our last election. Get to know them. Make sure they have the time commitment and the availability to be here and be at events and take part. We all don't have to agree, but we all do work together to try, make us right for our kids in this community and this school district. So take advantage of one of these three if you don't know who you're voting for at this point because it really matters. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll add to that, Cheryl, to, to those that are running, make sure you have a platform. I do have neighbors, friends of my parents, starting to ask, who do I vote for? You know, I don't know much about these candidates. But even if you just have something online, just stating what you stand for, people are looking for those things. It really helps. Also, just on another note, I'm just thinking about our country and the events that have been going on. Just praying for our nation, praying for our leaders. This could have been one of the darkest weeks in our nation. And by the grace of God, I'm glad it was not. So just as we approach the November election, just praying for the right leaders and that things would go as planned. And yeah, it's almost back to school. Getting excited for that. And the summer's just gone by so quickly. Was able to stop by one of our schools this morning. I just want our principals to know, you know, if you'll invite me, I'll be happy to show up and try to make time and just touch base with you. Yeah, so excited for the new year. It's coming quick. Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to start off first by thanking staff and, and the board. We've had another long day today. And, but we ran through the agendas very efficiently today. So appreciate all your involvement and participation and conversation. And yes, we are in election season and this is the time for peaceful civil debate. And I do encourage the electorate to get out there and, and get to know your candidates because, again, as my colleagues have said, it matters to be informed. And there's been a lot of venues for you to participate thus far. And there's more coming, as mentioned. So, you know, participate. And I just want to also, once again, just congratulate Superintendent Moore and her recognition tonight. Thank you for your efforts. And we look forward to the, what's coming in the coming school year.
Thank you. That definitely came as a surprise. So thank you to the, to the Chamber for that recognition. I too want to just say, you know, I often get the question of what happens in a school district during the summer because people assume that we're all home and on vacation. But a lot of work has been done in order for us to have a very smooth start to the 24, 25 school year. I am so excited for our students to return. We appreciate all of our faculty and staff and our families and our students for the success that we had this summer and our summer programs. Thank you to the Ed Foundation for all of your support in bringing love to our, our adults as well as to our students. We have our Back to School Jam on the 3rd. Super excited about the Back to School Jam. We also ask our families, if you have questions about the start of the school year, please go to our website. Or you can reach out to Mr. Don Foley, who is always on social media, giving out his email, FoleyD@FlaglerSchools.com. He will be glad to answer any questions that you may have. If you haven't done so already, this is the last week for device pickup before school starts. So be sure, get your annual forms done, get your device pickup form done as well. Annual forms is for all students. And then device pickup is for all of our students that are in Grade Four and up. Also want to just recognize that our teachers come back on August 5th. And we're super excited to have them back. I know they're sitting at home recounting and counting the days again to say, is this for real? Is it really happening? This summer has definitely seemed to go by quickly. And so we always get, how and when will I know? get, how and when will I know who my teacher is, or how and when will I know my bus information? So, all of that information around bus pickup, you'll be able to have that the week before our Jack Back to School Jam, which will, is actually next week. We'll begin releasing routes. You will also be able to go on the website to get that information, or come to the Back to School Jam, we'll be able to help you. As for when will I know who my child's teacher is, when will I have the, my class schedule, that information is typically not available until three days after our teachers begin back. So, they'll come back on the 5th, and so we will begin to release that information around the 7th. Now, some of our schools, they send that information in the mail, so you may get a lovely letter that my daughter always anticipates, saying who your teacher is. Some schools still do that. If not, we will begin pushing out information as to how you can go onto Skywork to get that information. Remember, go to our website, reach out to our staff, so that you have correct information. We are super excited to welcome our teachers, our faculty, our staff, back, and then our students on the 12th. It's been a busy summer, but I'm looking forward to a great school year. This is my favorite time of year, which is really all the time of the year. It's my favorite time of the year, but I'm super excited to have our students back. Get some rest, because it's almost go time.
Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.